Okay, the first item we have is the approval of our minutes from our December 28th meeting. You should have a copy of those in your packet. And also, as always, all of our meeting information is also made available on our webpage. So, does anybody see any corrections or anything we need to modify before I sign these into the minutes of the official record? All right, hearing none, I'll sign those on the 28th of December into our record. Replaced into our minute book. And then you'll also have copies of the minutes from the January the 4th, 2018 meeting, which was our first meeting in 2018, which was a special call meeting in order to sign the agreement in public for the settlement with Erlanger Medical Center on the 8.7 million dollars in debt that we had with them. Anyone have any corrections on that one? Hearing none, we'll sign these into the record. Okay, first new item on our business that we have tonight is consideration of a 2018 memorandum of understanding and partnership with the Family Crisis Center. This memorandum of understanding, the Family Crisis Center of Walker, Dade, Catoosa, and Chautauqua Counties, Inc., a nonprofit tax exempt organization under the laws of the state of Georgia and the rules and regulations of the Internal Revenue Code here within after Family Crisis Center. And then it lists off all of their local partners, being Walker County Department of Family Children's Services, Catoosa County Department of Family Children's Services, Dade County, and also Chautauqua County Department of Family Children's Services, the Lookout Mount Judicial Circuit, Victim and Witness Assistance, Four Points, Inc., the Fort Ovat Thorpe, Lafette, Somerville, Trenton, Ringo, Chickamauga, Lafette, Tryon, all police departments. Then they have partnership with the Walker County, Chautauqua, Catoosa, Dade Sheriff's Departments, and then the Walker, Dade, Chautauqua, and Catoosa Commission. Also, the Housing Authority for the City of Ringo, City of Lafette. Here within parties, whereas Family Crisis Center and partners all provide services to victims of domestic violence, both adults and children, whereas Family Crisis Center and partners all seek to provide services to ensure the health and safety and welfare of the victims served, whereas Family Crisis Center and partners all believe that all victims involved in domestic violence should have a safe, and whereas Family Crisis Center and partners are committed to collaborate together to ensure domestic violence victims receive any and all needed services, they enter into this agreement. The memorandum of understanding shall be effective from January 1, 2018 through December 31st of 2018. If funding for the activities described here within is not secure, this memorandum of understanding shall be considered void. Family Crisis Center agrees to the following. Number one, to provide a 24-hour crisis line. Number two, provide emergency shelter for victims of domestic violence. Three, provide safety planning for residential and non-residential victims of domestic violence. Four, provide legal advocacy services, assist in completion of temporary protection orders, TPOs. Five, provide victims of domestic violence appropriate referral based on need. Six, provide domestic violence support groups for victims of domestic violence. Seven, provide financial assistance as funding allows to victims of domestic violence. Eight, provide follow-up service and support. Nine, provide community education. Ten, confidentiality for all clients served through the Family Crisis Center. The partners agree to the following. Number one, to make appropriate referrals to the Family Crisis Center as needed. Two, to cooperate with the Family Crisis Center staff and volunteers in the performance of their duties. Three, partners' participation with Family Crisis Center shall maintain all information regarding domestic violence program cases confidential as required by state and federal law, rules, and regulations. Each partner shall sign and date as individual signature page. So, we have a page here that I will sign and date showing that the Walker County Commission is a partner with the Family Crisis Center to support them in these goals and actions that they carry out in this community. Is there any questions or comments about this memorandum? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and sign this. Also, for information, we do provide them some financial assistance and support so they can use that funding to match grants that they receive. In the past, the county has provided them, from understanding, $10,000 a year of financial support, but this year, due to our budget restraints and cutting of our budget pretty much across the board in most every department, we were in a position where we had to cut that funding back to $7,500 per year. So, we sent them a letter notifying them that we were going to have to reduce that funding. It's something that we do have the discretion to change from time to time as budget warrants or pushes us to have to do so. So, we did reduce that funding by $2,500 down to $7,500. It wasn't anything negative about their program or their services or anything that they provide, but I did take a look at their financial reporting. They actually have some monies in reserve, so I felt that they were going to be okay to continue to operate, and they actually were, once again, like many operations, were stronger financially than we are as a county. So, we wanted to continue to show our support, but felt like that pulling back a little bit on that support was not going to jeopardize their operation. Okay. Number two, consideration of Walker County Extension Office, University of Georgia memorandum of understanding slash agreement outlining the ownership and department assignment of the vehicle number 148-4H-H minibus. And so, we have a memorandum of understanding here with the University of Georgia that I'll read, and then we have a representative here tonight with this organization, and so we're going to ask him to further speak on this, and if he'll take also just two or three minutes to kind of give everybody just a brief overview of the relationship with the university system and what your role is and how we partner together for the betterment of our community, I think would be good for everybody to hear from you tonight. This is a memorandum of understanding with the University of Georgia, and this is dated January 1, 2018. The memorandum of understanding outlines the ownership/department assignment of county vehicle number 148-4H minibus and services as an agreement between Walker County Commissioner and the Walker County Extension Office. Vehicle number 148-4H minibus is a 2012 Ford E350 Coach, which is currently assigned to the Walker County Extension Office for use by the Walker County 4H Program. Having a prior commitment from Walker County Commissioner, Walker County 4H allotted $46,190 on March the 2nd, 2012 to purchase the vehicle with the understanding that it would be a county vehicle, with the county assuming the responsibility of title, service, insurance, and maintenance, and understanding that this vehicle will be permanently assigned to the Extension Office/4H Program and utilized for their transportation needs. The funds for the purchase of the $46,190 were private/local foundation funds donated to the Walker County 4H for the specific use of purchasing a minibus. The foundation that provides the funds gave those funds with the understanding that the vehicle would also be assigned to the Walker County Extension Office 4H Program and not transferred to any other county department in the future. This minibus is to be used exclusively by the Walker County Extension Department, and all decisions regarding its use shall be made by the Walker County Extension Coordinator, Extension Office/Department Manager. In the event the Walker County Government does not wish to own the minibus at any point in the future, ownership will revert back to the Walker County 4H Program. This agreement shall be in effect from the date signed until vehicle 148 is no longer in service or until an updated memorandum of understanding that is an agreement with both Walker County Commission and the Walker County Extension Coordinator is signed. So, we have a place for me to sign this as the Commissioner and also as the Walker County Commission Coordinator who's here with us tonight. So, what would you like to add to this?
Okay, this agreement is actually just an updated agreement from one that was signed when it was originally purchased. Not any real changes to it, it's just a formal agreement assigning this vehicle strictly to the Extension Office since it was purchased with foundation funding that was donated to the 4H Program and provided to the county for purchases of the vehicle back in 2012. It's very important to our program. We appreciate the county helping out with the maintenance and tag and all for it, and of course, where it says having a prior commitment, of course, that was with the former administration at that point in time before we purchased that vehicle.
Tell us a little bit about, Mr. Edward Tal. You intermeshed with the university system and with the county, and what services y'all provided?
Okay, the Walker County Extension Office is a quadruply funded office that receives state, federal, and county funding. On the county side, here in Walker County, of course, it's Walker County Government. State side is University of Georgia. We work closely with University of Georgia, bringing research-based information to local systems, and basically that's in areas of agriculture, youth, and 4H is in that youth portion, and family and consumer sciences. We currently, I'm the Walker County Extension Coordinator and the agricultural agent. Casey Hobbs is our 4H agent, and our family and consumer science position has been vacant for several years. We still have publications on canning, freezing, those type things for local produce growers and folks at our office. It's available to citizens in that family and consumer science, but we do not have a person there. As far as agriculture and 4H, we do programming out in the county. We work with citizens, we're available to citizens throughout the county. From looking, this, I mean, this week, we've looked at trees, at individuals had questions about falling on their homes, to testing a hay sample that had very high nitrites, possibly toxic to cattle, to testing, just got tested back for radon in water. We do hundreds of soil samples for large commercial farmers, to help them out and manage in their properties, help work with them on nutrient management plans using fertilizer and poultry leaders, as far as fertilizer, make sure it's used appropriately, and a number of other things. We have, besides working with those large farmers, we work with home gardeners and home lawns and all type issues. So, there's something for everybody at the Extension Office. We help out with, don't have to be a large farmer for us to work with you. The 4H Program, that youth component, our 4H agent and program assistant go into all the schools in the county and provide 4H programming as a means of informing them about things outside their school that they get involved in. With agriculture kind of in the background, we have a lot of different teams that travel. We had a consumer judging team, just compete in the qualified district contest by winning second place to attend the state contest recently, one of the uses of this minibus. And we have individuals go to citizenship, leadership conferences, at 4H camps, and different things. So, a lot of different opportunities provided through the 4H Program. The 4H minibus is an integral part of that, just to make transportation possible.
Well, thank you for being here. Norman Edwards has been great to work with, and he actually went on one of the shows that I do on Wednesday night, and we talked about 4H. I have a lot of calls that come in, people asking questions. Norm is very informed and educated about agriculture and a lot of different things, and then he has the resources and backing of reaching out to the university system if there's things that he runs into that kind of give them all something to think about. So, through this process, we did find some documentation from when this was done a few years back, I guess in probably 2012 it was, but this wasn't actually entered into the minutes, and so we wanted to make sure that this was well documented, put into the minutes that this agreement, this memorandum does exist. And also, we found out through this process of review that this vehicle only had liability insurance on it, and so this is quite an expensive vehicle, and we wanted to make sure that we had full coverage and comprehensive insurance on this to make sure if there was an at-fault accident, that there's funding there to replace this vehicle. Otherwise, the county would have to come up with that money, and we felt like it was more of a value to have it fully insured than just to have liability coverage on it. So, we were able to take care of that all at the same time. So, it was good that this all surfaced the same time we were reviewing our insurance, and Norman Edwards came in and started talking to me about this, so we wanted to make this into our minutes and let everybody know that everything's up to good standings, and we have full coverage insurance on this vehicle now. So, we'll get you a copy of this before you go tonight, or the original, maybe we'll keep a copy. Okay, item number three, water facility maintenance agreement for Walker County Board of Ed. This is a pretty standard agreement. We actually have a couple of these tonight. I'm not going to read all of the legalese here, but this basically is part of our compliance that we have to follow for our stormwater management in Walker County to make sure anyone that is disturbing land and building a facility and having a stormwater runoff program and maintenance agreements. So, these agreements are actually put in place and actually recorded at the clerk's office at the courthouse, so this is actually becomes part of the legal record of the tracking of deeds and so forth. So, we have one here tonight, first of all, from the Board of Education, and this is where they're building a new vehicle/bus maintenance repair facility on Osborn School Road next to their facility that they have there on Osborn Road that they use. So, this is an expansion project for them. This application, it's all been reviewed by the engineering firm that the county uses to make sure everything's in order and everything's in compliance. So, this is just more or less a housekeeping type item to have proper documentation to make sure that this is done in order, and we have public record of this. So, I'm going to sign this as Walker County. This also needs to be notarized, and we have Ms. Charlene here to do so for us tonight. Also, very similar, same verbiage, we have an agreement with the Rossville Limited Partnership, and that is their business name for the new food city on Mission Ridge Road that's under construction. So, since they're doing a complete demolition and a rebuild, they also have to have a stormwater management program, so they have that set up as Rossville Limited Partnership, and this is very much the same documentation, and we'll enter this into the record as well. We have a resolution approving the conveyance of a small irregular tract to the Simpson Memorial United Methodist Church. So, we have a resolution here. Let me give y'all just a little bit of background on this before I read this. And also, you've got a copy of a map in here. It's three or four pages over, so you've got a Q Public map and also a survey map that you can look at. This property is a portion of the old Coats America Building up in Rossville, and this property was donated to Walker County back in 2007, after that facility had closed. And so, at that time, Walker County took that property in, hoping and suspecting that they could take the property and utilize it for economic development for maybe another manufacturing type facility. Well, it's been sitting there since 2007. Well, about three years ago, we found in the minutes of the Development Authority, they had voted unanimously approved to take a small triangular portion of this property and donate it to the church next door, which is Simpson United Memorial, excuse me, no, let me get that right, Simpson Memorial United Methodist Church, that's right there on McFarland Avenue, and they had been taking a portion of this property and maintaining it, keeping it clean, and it actually allowed their property to be more squared up and gives them more of a squared up piece of property, and it also gave them more of an access to that Walnut Street, which is the side street that runs up side Coats American. The reason this little triangle piece was in place is that used to be where the rail spur crossed from the railroad track. That rail spur has been gone for many years. It doesn't exist anymore. The railroad is still there, but the actual spur to that facility and the crossing of the road has been gone for quite some time. So, the Development Authority, back under the previous administration as well, all felt that this property should be donated and deeded over to the church as what was in the best interest of the community. The problem is, is they never ended up getting the work completed and never actually followed through with the process of getting this done. And so, we have been working to do a request for proposal. We have some interest in the overall Coats property, and so before we did that, you see the, on the Q Public page, the black triangle piece that's been hand drawn in is the actual partial, and then you can see from the survey map that it is .14 acres in the dimensions, and then you'll see noted there where Simpson's Memorial Methodist Church is located. So, we have run this through our legal review process with our attorney. There is provisions within the state law that is referenced into the OCG here that we're going to be quoting, that does allow county government to take small pieces of property that has no real value or no real use and actually donate that property. So, since this entire property was donated to Walker County, we have no cost in this. It's not been generating any revenue. It's not on the tax rolls, so we're not losing revenue at that point, nor do churches pay taxes, so it's not going back onto the tax rolls. But this is just trying to help out the church that has done a lot of care and maintenance on that property for many years, even prior to the Development Authority recommending that the county deed that little partial over to them. This property is actually in the ownership and name of the Walker County Government. The Development Authority being the development arm and marketing arm for the county has been working to try to find someone to rent, lease, or purchase this property. So, it was their recommendation unanimously, and we've gone back and looked in the minutes and found that. We also, the Development Authority Chairman, Robert Wardlaw, also has contacted the pastor of that church to let them know that we had discovered this and had not totally forgot about it, and wanted to make sure that they were still in agreement to accept this property, and they said they were, and was glad to hear from us. So, this resolution, and we have a quick claim deed that will be filed at the courthouse to make this a legal transaction and to bring public attention to what we're doing here tonight. So, this is Resolution R-001-18, Resolution approving the conveyance of a small irregular tract to the trustees of the Simpson Memorial United Methodist Church. Whereas, the sole commissioner is the local governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas by deed of gift dated December 21st of 2007 and recorded at Book 1533, Page 250, Walker County, Georgia Property Records, Walker County acquired a small and triangular 0.14 acre tract of land located at Walnut Street in Rossville, Georgia, and further described in the legal descriptions attached as Attachment A, the described property. And whereas, OCGA 36-9-3 permits the conveyance of property by the county to abutting landowners of small or narrow strips, to land so sharp or so small as to be incapable of being used independently. Whereas, the county and the church constitutes all of the abating owners of the described property, and whereas the church, as partial consideration for the conveyance, agrees to improve, keep, and maintain the described property in a clean and aesthetically pleasing manner so as to attract commercial and other development in the area and to improve property values, and whereas the county deeds the improvements to be made and in the continuing maintenance to be provided as sufficient consideration for the property, and whereas the county deeds the conveyance of the property to the church to constitute the highest and best use of this property. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the attached deed to convey the described property tract to the trustees of the Simpson United Methodist Church is hereby approved, and the sole commissioner and his designees are hereby authorized and directed to execute this deed and to take such further action as may be necessary or inscrutable to carry out and comply with the intent of this resolution. So, resolve the 11th day of January 2018. And as it describes in here, this is a abutting piece of land, it's a small strip of land that could not be really developed or really done anything with. So, we feel like that there's no impact of this property negatively to the county and will not affect what our future hopes and desires are to sell and get someone to take over the ownership of the remaining property. So, we do all agree in the Development Authority, even currently, the board has looked at this once again, the current board's looked at this, and we all agree that this is the best use of this property. Is there any questions or comments about this?
I think they use that property members of the church does, and make a little thing there, and they bury them out there with like footstomps. I've got it in the back of the church. They've got it in the back of the church now and then they, I think they've put them on there so they got some heat.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this? Uh, it does, I won't read this quick claim deed, they're pretty straightforward. Uh, and you do have a copy of it, but it says there in the last one that, um, that the grantor for the consideration is sum of ten dollars and other value for consideration in hand paid at or before the sealing and delivering of this, of the, uh, so, you know, it's basically a gift back to, to the church. Okay, now we have our Walker County Department Statistics for December two thousand and seventeen. Uh, we are excited that we are now moving forward to having this information provided to you at the first meeting of the month instead of the last meeting of the month. Because we, uh, started doing this, uh, long about April or May. And in the past, time all the departments got their information together, it pushed us into their second meeting of the month, which is the fourth Thursday of the month. And so, we were then right out of month before we were able to report the prior month's business. So, we have, uh, inspired everyone to get their information in early, to allow Joe to pull the information together, to allow us to start reporting this information at the first meeting of the following month. So, we'll get the information out much quicker. Uh, very excited and, uh, very enthused of the progress that we continue to make at the animal shelter, uh, with the number of, um, adoptions, rescues, and return to owners. Uh, we had a great month in December with the promotional program that they did out there. And also, was able to continue to reduce the number of euthanized animals, uh, probably to some of the lowest rates that's ever been seen in Walker County. There was only, uh, six dogs and four cats that were euthanized in the month of December. These animals were sick. Uh, our code enforcement in compliance, there was seven hundred and twenty-one inspections that were in compliance. We found sixty-eight properties in violations that they wrote a citation for. They were able to close fifteen cases. Uh, this is a program that we started the first of the year that has really exceeded my expectations of the amount of, uh, violations that we have found. But most importantly, the amount of cases percentage wise that we've been able to close. And so, look there to the right, you've got your annualized data in two thousand and seventeen. They found four thousand seven hundred and forty-five properties in compliance, no issues at all. And then they found fourteen hundred and sixty-nine that had violations. And so, we started documenting in May, so we've got s- some partial data here, but we started documenting in May. How many of those fourteen hundred and sixty-nine did we get and motivate and encourage them to get into compliance? So, it was four hundred and eighty properties that they were able to work to get into compliance. And so, when you look at the prior to that in two thousand and sixteen, uh, some of this was not being tracked and managed properly. So, we only have data on how many citations were written. And it was only two hundred and twenty-one citations written for the entire year. And we wrote fourteen hundred and sixty-nine citations. So, that's an astronomical effort of improvement. And our goal is with those citations is not to try to generate revenue. We would rather give them a citation to give them a warning. And with that first citation, they'll have thirty days to get that prod- property into compliance. So, a citation doesn't mean they've got to pay a fine on the first offense. The citation means we're serious about what we're doing and we mean that you've got to come into compliance. And so, we've been able to document since May that four hundred and eighty have come into compliance. Our, uh, fire department, uh, continues to, uh, show, uh, great improvement with, by using the quick response vehicles. Uh, they used three hundred and eighty-three calls for the quick response vehicles out of the total responses of four hundred and forty-eight. So, you can see for the year, uh, we probably had a, a record number of responses, I would say at four thousand seven hundred and forty-two compared to last year at three thousand four hundred and ninety-two. Uh, total responses using the quick response vehicles being three thousand ninety-two. Our, uh, litter detail trash pickup was seven thousand nine hundred and eighty pounds for the month of December and a hundred and twenty-three thousand twenty pounds for the year. Uh, we've seen, uh, also great improvement from our Mountain Co Farms operation. The staff out there as well has done a fantastic job. Uh, they had forty-seven nights booked, um, in the cabins and utilizing the house and renting those out. So, we had five hundred and twenty-five nights for two thousand and seventeen. Prior year of two thousand and sixteen, there was a hundred and sixty-two nights booked out. So, they, uh, they've done a fabulous job of marketing, uh, taking people's calls, uh, providing top level service, hospitality, keeping things clean and making it where people want to come by and visit Mountain Co Farm and stay. So, we've had many repeat customers because they've had a good experience. And so, five hundred and twenty-five nights, uh, I would say is probably a record for that operation. Uh, our planning and zoning has, uh, been able to document nine additional single-family home constructions in the month of December, which gave us a total for the year of a hundred and thirty-five new single-family homes being constructed uh, versus last year being a hundred and twenty-three. So, we've had an increase of new single-family home construction. Our public relations, uh, Joe continues to do a, a, an awesome job for getting our message out. He actually, uh, was able to document forty-four stories that were in, uh, media circulations by different media outlets. And also, we had a hundred and sixty-three people start following us or like us on Facebook and a hundred and sixty-four new people start following us on Facebook. And Joe was able to get thirty-seven posts out through the holidays. So, we had a, uh, outstanding month of visitors to the website of thirty-three thousand nine hundred and ninety-four, which brought our total for the year of visits to our website of three hundred and ninety-nine thousand eighty-seven versus, uh, a hundred and seventy-three thousand seven forty-five, so they're more than double. So, with that, also, we, uh, have launched our new website. Uh, it's a, um, site that works very well with your smartphones and your tablets. The other site was not a responsive site. So, a lot of times, some of the data on your cell phone would not show or your tablets would not show. So, there's more information than ever before on the county website. Uh, we're continuing to add stuff on there on a daily basis. Uh, one thing that's really nice is there is a calendar of events on that site. So, if you go to frequently asked questions, you can see the calendars for the entire year. Or at the bottom of each page, it will show you the most three current upcoming events. Also, all of the, um, holiday schedule for the county government of what holidays were closed is on there already for the entire year. All the meetings are listed for the county commission's office, the planning office. Um, you have, uh, meetings for, um, uh, what else am I missing?
Board of Elections.
Board of Elections, that's right, Board of Elections. And also, the Development Authority, um, Water and Sewer Authority, so there's all of those meetings, times, dates, locations. All of that's on the website on a county, on a calendar with our planning and zoning as well. And so, we are taking and posting all of our materials on there. And so, we have already seen a spike just in the last week on our website traffic on a daily basis. So, we're able to get more detailed statistical data and we're seeing, um, constants, improvements, uh, with that. And so, we wanted to use that as a tool to help get the message out and help inform people. So, I believe you'll see going forward, even our website numbers will grow even more. There's a lot of interest that people have in Walker County and the government and what's going on. And we want to provide that information at their fingertips. Also, if you look under the, uh, financial information, you will be able to find all of the financial audits back to nineteen ninety-six. In the past, that was a special open records request, it would take three to four weeks to get those. And so, we want to make those available. So, from nineteen ninety-six all the way through two thousand and sixteen, which is the most current, every audit, every page is listed there for you in a PDF. You can download those, save those, print those, all that information's there. So, we, under the new format and website and having more storage and it being a reactive site, you can pull those up even on your smartphone or your tablet and be able to view those. Where in the past, that was not capable due to the over-technology. So, look at that, uh, county website and I believe you'll be happy with what you see there. So, at this time, that adjourns our regular scheduled meeting. At this time, we will open up the floor to any open discussion or comments from any. Who's first? Surely, I didn't cover everything.
I got a question to ask on this fire department thing.
Yes.
On this, uh, QRV. How many goes first to accident or something? And how, what percentage goes to the fire on this thing? Is it still two percent like it or?
Well, what they were doing in the past, just so for a recap so everybody will understand, they sent out a big fire truck to every call. So, if it was a tree down, it was a fender bender, a medical call, lip assist, it didn't matter. They would take some of the biggest fire trucks they had and they would load up and go. And so, what we started finding out with the data is that ninety percent of the calls on average had nothing to do with a fire. They were these other type of calls that were non-fire related, being accidents, trees down, entrapment, those type of things. And so, what you're seeing there in those numbers, those are the number of calls that they're able to run with the quick response vehicles where we don't even have to roll the big fire truck at all. But with those trucks, they also have four hundred gallons of water on those trucks because they were formerly set up to be brush trucks. And so, they're two thousand three, two thousand two model trucks that the county already heading inventory since those dates when they were bought new. And most of them had anywhere between nine to eleven thousand miles on them. And the county had eight of those. And so, we have deployed six of those out to six of our full-time stations to utilize those. And that's why we wanted to track that data to show how much more efficiently we're able to operate. Because if you go to a, um, a call with a big fire truck, you've blocked the whole road. And then a lot of places, it's hard to turn those big trucks around when they go to leave the scene. And so, these trucks are smaller, they're F four fifty trucks. Uh, they can maneuver better through intersections of traffic. Uh, they can get there quicker. But also, most of, part of the importance of that is we're using less fuel. We're having less maintenance and wear and tear on the vehicles. And we've seen a pretty substantial reduction in maintenance and fuel cost. And then each one of those trucks will dispatch with two men on it.
Yes, this, this not what I'm saying, I'm saying this, if this, you said QRV thing goes out to a fire, can you break that down and say this, this number meaning from fire and this number meaning went for the ambulance first?
Uh, that's very possible that we could break that data out more. Yeah, we could probably get that data, we can check on that and see, uh, on those quick responses if any of those were even a fire. Now, what will happen on occasion too, um, if you have multiple calls going on, sometimes if a QRV is, is out on a call in service and there's another incident, say another accident happens, say if the weather's bad or icy conditions, they may end up having to dispatch a fire truck with another crew just because that was the available vehicle that they could go in. So, um, the problem they, we were seeing before, the thing Chief Hodge wanted to change is why are you dispatching a sixty, seventy thousand pound truck with two or three thousand gallons of water on it to a fender bender? And, uh, you're taking, blocking up more space on the road, you, takes you longer to get there. Uh, there's more risk of creating another accident with a heavier, bigger truck. So, uh, we've seen great improvements with that new concept. But we can see if we can get some more data breakdown, I think it'd be interesting to see. One thing that I hope that we can do too, um, I haven't had a chance to mention this to Joe yet. I spring these things on you from time to time. But I think it'd be good if we can track our, uh, transit data of number of transit riders that we have and be able to show the public the number of people that are actually utilizing that transit service. And so, I would say they have that, uh, data, so Joe add that to the list. So, you know, we, uh, we wanna-
That's a night job.
We wanna, uh, you know, let people know what's going on. I think people have enjoyed looking at this data and understanding what we're doing. And also too, I think if you look back over time, and all of these reports are also on our website where we have these archived, it, uh, it motivates the staff to raise the bar, to do even better the next month, or how can we improve this, or everybody's watching. So, I think it's, uh, a motivational tool and it also helps me track performance of what's going on in these different departments. So, I think it's, uh, it's a good tool for us to use and I think it, uh, better proves the value that we're delivering to the citizens. What else?
Just looking at the numbers, I think we need another farm.
Another farm.
I mean, five twenty-five up from one sixty-two. That's a home run.
Well, what we were hoping to do is get the numbers up where it's more attractable to somebody that wants to come in there and lease out the entire facility.
Sounds good to me.
We would like to be out of the Mountain Co Farm business. Uh, and so, we've worked hard to make improvements to be able to show that it can be done, but we just don't need to be in that operation on an ongoing basis, uh, and turn that over to the private sector.
So, it is making money.
Well, no, not yet, but we have drastically reduced the losses. But our projections are, uh, in our current budget, that it's gonna be short probably around eighty-one thousand dollars on our current fiscal year, which, uh, first year they had it in operation, it was nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the red. And they got it down to around seven hundred, I think last year it was around four twenty-five, four thirty. So, we have projected a little over, I think eighty-one thousand dollars that we're going to be short. So, it's still, still eating money, but we've reduced it drastically. So, we hope to be able to lease it out where it becomes an income generator on a lease payment and we get out from under that, that operation.
I was just kidding.
So, if you're interested.
No, no, not at all.
What about your primary healthcare?
Primary healthcare, I don't have any additional news. I know our county attorney's working on it. We had a meeting scheduled today and he, uh, got tied up and delayed in court longer than he thought. So, we're gonna be getting together tomorrow and going over that. But, uh, we've got to bring closure to that because we've got to move forward on other more important issues that affect our entire county. And, um, we want to get that one behind us and see what we need to do there to bring closure. What else? We might be on the record, we're, we're done in less than an hour. I don't know if we've had one this quick. All right, well, I appreciate y'all coming out tonight and being supportive and being engaged and, uh, hope you have a safe travel home and look forward to seeing you at our next meeting. At this time, uh, the fourth Thursday of the month. I've got a conflict in my schedule, so that meeting has been canceled. But there may be a possibility, we may have a special call meeting before the month's over. So, keep a lookout on Facebook and on our webpage. We may possibly have a need to have a special call meeting before the month of January's over. But the meeting on the fourth Thursday has been canceled due to scheduling conflicts. I've got some training I have to do that day. So, appreciate you coming and y'all have a safe travel home.